Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, invited guests, city staff, and everyone in attendance. Thank you for coming to Portsmouth City Council meeting tonight. I also want to acknowledge our city leadership team on the dais, Mr. Carter, our city manager, Mr. Derek Challenger, our deputy city attorney, and Ms. Deborah White, our city clerk. Thank you all for being here. And I want to acknowledge my colleagues on council. Thank you all for being present. I would now ask that everyone please stand for a moment of silence following the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Portland, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And I would ask of my colleagues, please note your attendance electronically.
Six members of the city council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the minutes of a call meeting on June 9, 2025, a call meeting on June 10, 2025, and a regular meeting on June 10, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we're moving on in our agenda to presentations. We do have some presentations tonight. First, our employee retirement announcement. And after that, we will have our graduation acknowledgement for the Portsmouth Government 101 class participants. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and all those that are present. First, we have a couple of retirements. I'm going to ask the mayor if he'll help me with this. Will the retirees join us in the right corner here? First one is Captain Eric L. Kirk from the Fire Department. Is he here? There he is. And also Ms. Ramona Ranson. Ms. Ramona, are you? There she is. Please join us down here. We have a presentation for you.
We'll deal with Captain Kirk here. Are you the real Captain Kirk?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
James T.
James T., okay. I remember that Captain Kirk, so you kind of look like him. In any event, Captain Kirk, on behalf of a grateful city, we want to thank you for your service to our city and we wish you well in all of your future endeavors.
Now, the mayor said it all. I just want to congratulate him on 20 years of service with our city and all that he's done to make our department the best that it can be. Congratulations in your retirement, sir.
Ms. Ramona Ranson, ma'am, if you would come forward, please, so that we can recognize you. Thank you once again so much for all of your service to the city of Portsmouth. We couldn't have got here without you, that's for sure. And on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, we want to thank you and we wish you well in all of your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And we want to acknowledge 45 years of service. That's amazing.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to stand on this side of the podium so I won't have my back to the esteemed audience. I know, that was my dilemma. I didn't know if back here or back there. So here's what I'll do. I'll stand to the side. How about that?
No, no, no. We serve the community. Press on.
Thank you, thank you, councilman. Let's go this way. That's my man. That's a Navy guy. Good guy. All right. So, Government 101. Congratulations. The city of Portsmouth recently concluded its Spring Government 101 workshop, a dynamic and informative program designed to educate residents about the inner workings of local government. This spring session welcomed 25 engaged Portsmouth residents who dedicated nine consecutive Mondays, Monday evenings, to learning about the structure, service, and responsibilities of the city operations. Over the nine-week course, participants explored all 19 city departments through a service of interactive sessions. Each evening was facilitated by department representatives who provided formal presentations led by engaging discussions and responded to questions during the Q and A segments. The workshop offered a unique opportunity for residents to connect directly with city staff and gain a deeper understanding of Portsmouth's daily functions. As we celebrate the success of our spring cohort, we are pleased to acknowledge the commitment and civic spirit of our 25 participants. This evening, we honor their achievement by awarding each a certificate of course completion. Now, looking ahead, we are excited to announce that the Fall 2025 Government 101 session is expected to begin in early September. Details and registration information will be posted on the city website in mid to late August. Now, at this time, we'll begin the presenting of our course completion certificates. So as I call your name, I invite you to come up front and accept your certificate, and you'll have a photo opportunity with the mayor and our city manager. All right? I kindly ask the audience to join us in congratulating each individual as they come up. All right. Our first recipient, Elizabeth Brown. Thank you. Vince Colbertson. James Cullen. All right. Thanks, James. Kathy Cullen. Amy Davis. Extra pictures, extra pictures. William Goodman. It's our water guy. Keeps our drinking water clean. Jean Granger. Kristen Law. Monique Leek. Nevin Map. Andre Mayfield. Anna McCray. Anna Omorey. Eric Perryman. Nicole Rice. Kevin Turner, the first. Closely followed by Kevin Turner, the second. Frederick Whittington. And last but surely not least, Mr. Trenton Walker. All right. Yep. So you can start working your way forward for a group photo. What is that? Audrey Lassiter. I'm sorry, Ms. Lassiter. Save the best for last. All right. One more. Mr. Derek Little, Jr. He's a new employee, Mr. Carter, so you know. I'm not going to mention the city he came from, but we got him here now. Got him now. Good job. Any other, any others? I think we're good. So start working your way up front for the group photo so we can kind of hurry this along. And once again, congratulations to all our course graduates. Give them another round of applause. And as they're lining up, we would like to extend sincere thank you to the city leadership, city staff, for all their support in Government 101. And we look forward to government in the fall. Government 101 in the fall. Thank you.
No, you're fine. I got a bad habit of directing.
No, no, you're fine. Your group is all right. All right. Okay, I'm going to take three shots, okay? Ready? Okay, maybe more than three. Here we go. Awesome. Thank you.
And I do want to call up at this time. We have one more acknowledgement. If we could ask Lieutenant Luck to come forward, please. Lieutenant Mark Luck. Stand in the middle. I'm going to turn the mic over to my colleague.
So we wouldn't be right to allow Lieutenant Luck to slip out the side door without recognition upon his retirement. So we want to congratulate Lieutenant Luck as he enters this new season of life. We're going to miss him. We have depended on our police officers to keep the peace here in council chambers and all around town. So if you're out and about with our Parks and Rec friends, there's about a 99% chance that you also saw Lieutenant Luck because he is everywhere that there's something happening around town in Portsmouth. So Lieutenant, congratulations on this new season. We thank you for your service. We thank you for keeping us safe here in council chambers.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And because Lieutenant Luck is standing between two Navy guys, I want to wish you, sir, in your retirement, fair winds and following seas.
Thank you, sir.
All the best. Thank you all for your patience during that process. And we will now move to ask our city clerk to read our speaker statement.
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council staff or the audience and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we've moved to the city manager's report, our first item, item 25-178. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting with appreciation the donation of a 2008 Northwind boat and a King Boat trailer from the city of Norfolk for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item, item 25-179. And would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance to transfer $250,000 from the Social Services Fund to the Children's Services Act Fund to increase the funding available to serve as the required local match for mandated services.
Thank you. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Next item, 25-180. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting a marketing leverage tourism grant in the amount of $22,500 and a destination marketing organization tourism grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation and appropriating state funds in the FY 2025 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Museums and Tourism for Marketing.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item 25-181. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the item we are considering for, the ordinance, excuse me, that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance, one, to reappropriate unexpendable federal grant funds in the amount of $45,400, excuse me, $45,441,964 from the FY 2024 Portsmouth Public Schools Grants Fund budget to the FY 2025 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund budget. And two, to appropriate new federal grant funds in the amount of $2,789,480 to the FY 2025 Portsmouth Public Schools Grants Fund budget.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We're now moving to our new business item on the agenda, item 25-182, Boards and Commissions. And Councilman Hugo, do we have any boards or commissions to report tonight?
We have no board and commission business this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Moving right on, item 25-183, items submitted by council. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering under this item?
A resolution granting a one-year extension of use permit UP 2307 to construct four townhouses at 3,002 and 3,006 Deep Creek Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items to be submitted by council members? I do have one item to submit. I just want to, on behalf of the city of Portsmouth and the Portsmouth City Council, thank Mr. Gil Bland, CEO of the Urban League, and in support of the Juneteenth Festival that we had here in the city of Portsmouth. It was a wonderfully attended event, very exciting for the people to come out and learn about the history and the importance of celebrating Juneteenth. So I did want to make that acknowledgement at this time. Are there any other items submitted by council? I do have one other item that I would like to just submit on behalf of council. I want to thank Dr. Coleman, who is our deputy city manager, for standing in for our city manager, Mr. Carter, while he was away doing business. Dr. Coleman did an outstanding job of making sure that the standard was the standard. So, sir, I want to thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you, brother. I appreciate you, man. Thank you.
And with that, we'll move to the next item, which is item 25-184, Report on Pending Items. Mr. Carter, do you have any items to report, sir?
Yes, sir. I have a couple items that I'd like to talk about just before we turn this back over. First thing is, we've tried to launch this new building system for a few times in our past. We have successfully launched that new building system. It is up and running now. And I want to congratulate the team that's worked diligently to get this through. Like I said before, we sputtered a couple times with this in our past, but we've got it over the finish line this time. So I'm really proud of that. Also, I want to make sure that we let you know that the Crawford Street roundabout took a little time to get started. But if you look out there now, the vegetation has started to be removed. That project is getting underway. We still have a September rim and cutting slated for that. So we're pressing hard to make sure we hit that date. But just so that you see that there's progress being made, and we're going to move that process forward. Also, just to let you know that traffic calming has started for the Waterview community. That's been something that we've been trying to get started for quite some time, but we've moved that project forward. And that has started. That should begin next week. Also, just thank you again for your support, for all that you allowed us to do with the Government 101. That was a pretty heavy lift that we've asked our citizens to do. But now we have some new ambassadors in our city that knows what's happening inside our government and will work toward helping us make sure that we are presented and that we're always protecting the brand. And finally, we did have a report back that provided for you in your package. Hopefully, we've covered those things that you've asked about. If you have any other questions or concerns, please let us know. Thank you again for your support. And thank you, Dr. Coleman, for standing in while I was away. I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Carter, one of the items that you reported back on was the Cedar Lane manhole issue, specifically one at the entrance to Greenfield Farms. There are at least two others in the southbound Cedar Lane, kind of in the middle of the road, that are still hazards. I'm going to go pinpoint those locations and send that information to you so we finally get Cedar Lane off the books. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, city manager, for the traffic calming devices in Waterview. They've been looking for this since the 1960s. So it's finally going to happen. So it's definitely going to be appreciated by the citizens. Their Civic League, and the Civic League next to them, West Haven, has strongly requested that I ask for traffic studies in both of those neighborhoods. After the meeting, can you instruct me on the proper protocol for requesting that? Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Our next item on the agenda is item 25-185. Non-agenda speakers, and Madam Clerk, could you please read the speaker's statement?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member All remarks shall be directed, directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of the city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Sergio Neal. Mr. Neal, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm city manager. My name is Sergio Neal. I reside at fourteen twenty Elm Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth. First of all, I would be remiss, I have a special visitor to Portsmouth tonight. My oldest son, Tayshawn, is in the audience. He is a resident of Durham, North Carolina, but he is here in Portsmouth visiting for the summer, and I'm glad that I did bring him tonight so that he can have an example of what city government, how city government functions, and some of the things that could happen in this, in his city, or if he chooses so to move back to Portsmouth in his adulthood. So congratulations to all, and thank you all for what you have done tonight. I just wanted to also thank the city for the relationships with the community organizations, especially the ones that are operating with youth over the summer. We, it, it, it takes a lot of work and dedication, you know, especially with the challenges that we have to keep our youth off the streets during the summertime, to keep them actively engaged. So, you know, we want to keep that, promote in that relationship, you know, any opportunities that the city has for those that are interested, you know, make sure they go about doing it the right way with engaging with the youth and how the city can help promote that, that would be great, because again, you know, we, we, during the summer is our, is our most trying time here in the city of Portsmouth. In the thirty-eight years I have been on this earth, especially the thirty-something I have been living, and within this border, my hometown, I know that every summer is always a challenge with our youth. And we want to make sure that our youth continue on, they make it throughout the next school year, they make it on into adulthood, so they can continue to be productive citizens. And one, and one of those things that makes it happen is when they can stay engaged as much as they can. So what, you know, again, thank you to the city for allowing those spaces, whatever the city has, you know, that's available to community organizations to utilize in order to make those programs happen. One thing I would like, you know, one program I would like to shout out is that New Generation is doing a summer youth band that is practicing at a neighborhood facility recreation center on Mondays and Wednesdays from six to eight P.M. This band comprises of youth from all over the city, and some of these kids are in our school band, so it's great to see how they are really have been engaged, to really see what, you know, to keep, and to keep the kids that are, you know, may not have been exposed to instruments before, you know, within their school or whatever, or even at home, to come out and see, you know, how to get involved by playing music, you know, to be a part of a marching ensemble, and to really perform. You know, this band has been representing Portsmouth very well over the last, you know, few months, especially, you know, Norfolk, Suffolk, everywhere this band has gone, it's been amazing, and you know, we have the opportunity to even go to places not, New York, Chicago, Georgia, or whatever, and everywhere these kids from Portsmouth go, the people always look and ask, when are they coming back? When are they coming back? And that's only through the partnerships of the, of the parents in the city of Portsmouth. So again, I would like to thank you all for all of your work in helping us keep, to keep the program going.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Neal, for your comments. We definitely agree with you that it's important to keep our youth engaged. That said, Mr. Carter, we met with our Gun and Crime Task Force while you were away and talked a little bit about Portsmouth United. I know they were finalizing their list of activities for kids for the summer. I have not seen it announced. Do you know if it will be announced soon? And if you don't know, can we have a timeline for that so that we can, we can get it out to families? Thank you.
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I don't have a definite time, but I'll circle back through that process and, and send something out to the whole group so that everybody's aware, and we'll make sure that it's posted and advertised, so everybody's aware of what's happening.
And I should clarify for anyone that doesn't know, thank you, Mr. Carter. Portsmouth United did a fantastic job over spring break to provide free activities for kids and youth to keep them engaged, and the effort that they're working on now is to more than double that for the summer break. So it's a fantastic opportunity, so stay tuned, and we'll hopefully be able to get that out. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I too agree with Mr. Sergio Neal and the point that Councilwoman Bryant brought up about some of our programs, including those of Portsmouth United. Now, some of those programs are targeted to certain communities based on their programming, but like you said, Councilwoman Bryant, there's some upcoming ones for the summer. I think it would be great, just echoing what you said, to have that posted. And I also wanted to, my comment or question to you, Mr. Carter, is there's a lot of other community organizations that might not be through Portsmouth United, but they have community events happening. For example, there's a kickball tournament coming up in one of our communities. There's, of course, Baldwin on the River coming up. There's quite a few other, Mr. Neal pointed to, you know, the music program happening twice a week. There's like a Sunday basketball at the basketball court that Big Homies has for kids to come out. How do, what is our process for any of these community events, community members to, outside of social media, is there a process for them to submit to the city, have us vet, and then just kind of have that communication? Because the more opportunities available to our youth, the more we can kind of sent, help centralize some of that communication for the multiple activities happening in the community. I just, I think it only could have a positive net effect. I know we have to ensure that all of these, anything that the city promotes or communicates to our citizens is vetted. Is there something that we have in place right now for community organizations, if they're having an event in the community for the youth in particular to get that message out to our citizens, or is it just on their own for the, the marketing piece or that?
City manager, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. We do have a, a, a events calendar that we put out. The Parks and Recreation has a little booklet that they put out with all kinds of events in it. But if, and we promote more than just youth events. If other people have events that they request our help with, and again, we do vet all of those things because we are always going to protect the brand. So anytime that we get something, some information on there, we'll vet it, but if it meets those qualifications, we, we'll help advertise that process for it.
So do those organizations just need to, like, just submit a request via email?
Through our marketing department.
Through marketing, okay.
That's the right group.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, I'll pass that information along. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Joseph Kelly. Mr. Kelly? Okay, our next speaker is Ms. Donna Biggs. Ms. Biggs, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Donna Biggs. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in the original police service area five in Churchland. Tonight, I want to talk about what I have learned from attending a few board meetings. What I've learned attending these board meetings, basically, is that the city's structure is what strengthens our community relationships. The question is, how is the city's relationship with its people? How is the structure of the city maintained for communication with its people? See the organizational structure for the city? See at the top, it says that we, the people, are the source of leadership. You see this? We. See all the constitutional offices listed that we are in charge of? See the constitutional offices? We are in charge. Where are the manuals and workforce development guidelines? Is that what we call the charter? Is the charter handy? Who is responsible to talk with the people about these guidelines to do his and her duties to protect the people? What about the Boards and Commissions manual? How does the elected represent the people as liaisons on these boards and commissions? Where are the boards and commissions listed under the departments? How does the elected inform the people about what is being discussed in the board meetings? So the people have an opportunity for obtained knowledge of what is being planned, and then give his or her consent to agree or disagree with what has been discussed without his or her knowledge. In the Constitution of Virginia, Article One, Bill of Rights, it says that the Declaration of Rights was made by the good people of Virginia in the exercise of their sovereign powers, which rights do pertain to them and their posterity as the basis and foundation by the administration and management of our city government. Looking at the structure of the city's government, there is no city council legislator assigned to the police service areas for the people to have a representative to do the work for the people in the police service areas. See the list on the side of the organizational chart and the voting precincts? The overview of duties and responsibilities are mapped out on the organizational structure for having a workforce that's developed. Workforce development is a holistic approach to improving a city's access to a qualified workforce by working with all their local departments and divisions to establish effective programs to address numerous areas of citizens' needs, which include educating employees, overseeing their skills and employment needs, opportunities for career advancement, making sure there are no skill gaps and well-being. By investing in workforce development, companies can strengthen community relationships, attract top talent, improve employee retentions, and increase productivity and profitability. Looking at the Community and Development Department in the budget book, the divisions in the budget book are Community Planning and Development Program, Economic Development, Newport Community Development Authority, Permits and Inspection, Planning, Will it Hold? So look at the structure, ED, Economic Development Department is on the city manager. Does this include the EDA and the PPIC? Look at the vacancy of the deputy city manager, and under his leadership are the permits and inspection that is vacant, and the planning and zoning division. Look at the agenda of the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission. So I'll finish, but I wish y'all would start doing your job.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph.
Hi, I'm Sheila Joseph at one thirty-nine Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I was going to speak a little bit about how I appreciate Mr. Carter and his staff worked on the billing system. We go back and look on the wall, all the, the things that people done in the past. The billing system, for as long as I can remember, was messed up. If anyone remember when Dr. Patton was a hero, and I mentioned about the water bill, how it was messed up, and it wasn't keeping things in order, how you pay and showing good records, and she said, y'all need to take care of it. Go back and look at it. Mr. Carter, y'all done a, a well job. You came here in April, and here it is this year. You accomplished your mission. But yesterday, when I looked at my emails saying that twenty twenty-three of June, it would be up and running, so I said, well, I'm going to go downtown and, and ask for a printout and see, have we got the new bill yet? They got the new system up and running, and someone said, well, Ms. Joseph, we still working on it at this moment. Could you wait a little while? So I sit down and wait, and he said, well, you're going to have to come back tomorrow. And I said, well, give me a printout. So this, this right here is still the problem. He said, well, when you get the new bill, it won't be like that anymore. So I told him, he was thinking I was going to pay on the bill yesterday, and I told him I'm going to wait for the new billing, uh, number, account, which, you know, they explained to me, if you got a zero, you're going to have a two in front of your new account. I appreciate the fact that they took the time to explain that. So he said, check back tomorrow. So I checked back on the phone and talked to Ms. Stokes, and she said, well, we haven't got your bill yet, the new bill, with the new account and everything to start that off. So I'm just asking you, or whoever wants to send me an email, when we do that, would I have it in time enough for the next month bill, so I can pay my bill, fresh start with no old history, looking like this one I have and all the previous ones? I want to know if you're going to keep the old system and go back and walk through it with us that had the problem, and see how much late fees we've been charged, and the paperwork can make it look like they gave us credit, but we done paid the bill, you're not giving us credit. So I have all that. So I just want to address that, because there's a lot of money being taken out, and we not really late. We would like to be accommodated for some of the, uh, late fees that was wrongfully charged. I also want to thank everyone again that I spoke about. When we asked about the old bill, being compared with the new one, is you're going to keep it long enough to make sure that everybody be accommodated for those late fees that wrongfully charged. I think, again, you won't hear, but I let them know, I don't know if you had anything to do with it, but I spoke about the real estate billing system. And I didn't know until I decided this year I'm going to do something different. I'm going to start making sure I paid attention to the history. All I was doing is paying. And so after I addressed the issue, and I came back to city council, I noticed the statements in the past were showing no money amount, how we were paying, so when the new bill come, it will show that it was paid. I appreciate that. I don't know if you had anything, but whoever did it, they doing a good job now with that, because they showing when you paid it, and so when you get your new bill, it'll show that it's taken care of and what you owe. We spoke about the last time, and I have been told about something called Click Fix. I'm still haven't had a chance to get somebody to sit down with me on that, but then I start thinking, I'm going to finish this. How can someone help me understand how to use it? Because my son don't have time. He's at the Hamilton University right now, and I've been getting him writing you all, and I, I don't know.
Ms. Joseph, Ms. Joseph, you need to wrap it up, okay?
Right. I don't know if y'all had a C.C. copy, because I try to make sure everybody know what I'm talking about in y'all's seats. So you have a good day, and thank you. I'm looking for the new bill.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our speakers for this evening. If there's no other business to conduct, then seeing none, this miss, this meeting is adjourned. Drive safe, everyone.